Good evening. The January 9th meeting of the Evanston City Council shall come to order shortly before the scheduled beginning of the January 23rd meeting of the Evanston City Council. Happy New Year, everybody. Would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Burns? Councilmember Burns? Councilmember Saffron?
Here.
Councilmember Revell?
Here.
Councilmember Reed?
Here.
Councilmember Hadda Gaddis?
Here.
Councilmember Kelly?
Here.
Councilmember Harris?
Present.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Here.
Councilmember Newsma?
Here.
Please add Councilmember Burns to the roll.
And Mayor Bis?
Oh, sorry, here. Here. I see Councilmember Burns is about to walk in. Please add him to the roll as well. The first item on the agenda is Mayor's Public Announcements and Proclamations, of which I have none except for, once again, wishing everybody a Happy New Year and all of us collectively a productive 2023. The next item on our agenda is the City Manager's Public Announcements.
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. City Clerk Mendoza, I wanted to offer a very brief update on our ongoing work with the Black Employee Group. Councilmember Harris and I met with the group on December 13th to exchange updates and hear their feedback. We've made some adjustments, and we'll share draft documents with the group later this week. In addition, we are meeting with members at Implementation Committee next week to discuss our progress and our next steps. We decided collectively as a group to, back in December, to provide a more in-depth update at the January 23rd City Council meeting. And with that, I also want to introduce or ask Corporation Council to come up for a brief announcement.
Good evening, members of City Council, City Manager Stowe, City Clerk Mendoza, Nicholas Cummings Corporation Council. I just had a brief announcement that, effective today, our own Alexandra Rugge has been promoted to Deputy City Attorney. Alex is the longest-serving member of the Law Department, so she's been like sort of the calm in the storm upstairs. But I'm very proud to announce that she's our new Deputy City Attorney, so welcome Alex to the position. Thank you.
I look forward to serving in this new role.
Congratulations, Alex.
Congratulations.
And that concludes my remarks, Mayor.
Thank you, and I want to add my congratulations, Alex. Great news for our organization, our whole community, and excited to continue working with you in this new role. The next item on our agenda is communications from the city clerk.
Don't have any communications for today.
This brings us to public comment. We have almost precisely 15 residents, 15 individuals seeking to give comment this evening, so everyone will be given the first, the full three minutes. We begin, as always, with those who signed up in person to speak in person. The first of whom, and forgive me if I pronounce this incorrectly, is Marianne Benviste, who will be followed by Ellen King, and then Aina Gutierrez. Is Marianne Benviste, or someone whose name I improperly rendered as Marianne Benviste here?
She's in 8th Ward. I think she would have been here for the Harley Clark issue. I think they all took off.
Got it. Okay. Then we'll move on to Ellen King, who will be followed by Aina Gutierrez.
I'd like to just start by thanking you all for serving, because I just watched the last meeting, and that was exhausting just watching, so I know many of you were exhausted. So thank you for all your work. I know it's not an easy job at all. I just wanted to speak about the bag tax. I know I reached out to many of you today just to kind of let you know the thoughts as a business owner. I think we are all in agreement that we are all for doing all we can to protect the environment and push sustainability forward. As a business, Hune was started over 10 years ago, which is crazy to think, as a focus on working on sustainability, working with local farmers, and using compostable packaging, never using plastic, and honestly, trying to limit any sort of plastic bottles. So that's always been a part of our whole ethos since we started. So it's not that we disagree with doing movements to push people to, you know, do things that are better for the environment, bringing their own bags, reducing waste, and composting. We do that ourselves. As the business, we actually recycle, we compost, which costs more than garbage. It costs us about $360 a month to compost our waste. We also donate our food waste to different organizations throughout the community. Our problem with the bag tax is it pushes us on the front lines of, again, collecting a tax and trying to force people to change behavior when it could be done in many other ways. And one of the things that we could do is start on just even enforcing the laws that we actually have on the books right now. So the idle laws, you know, for trucks idling, that would do more if we just actually spent money enforcing that, or actually pushing to have people compost. To have a business be able to, let me just put it this way, I would be the one having to do the administration of filing the tax, recording, doing a report to run the tax. And I know for people, maybe it doesn't sound like a lot to take 30 to 45 minutes to do that, but that actually is a lot of time when you're running a business. We don't have time to be able to submit this tax, and we don't have time to record it. So I would really, really urge the council to focus on other ways that we, as a business community, can work together and not be opposed to each other. It feels very much like the business community is against what the City Council is doing, and it's not because we want to. We want to support the work. We want to be an environmentally friendly community, because we are. But what we don't want is to have a tax that we have to work to collect and submit. And then the penalties for failing to submit it because, God forbid, one of us gets COVID or someone's sick or we lose staff are really punitive, and it's pushing all of this burden on the business owners. My time's up.
In a few seconds, yes.
Yeah. Well, thank you for all of you also that called me back. I know everyone's busy, so those that didn't, I understood. But I appreciate the time that people took to talk to me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Aina Gutierrez.
Good evening. I'm Aina Gutierrez. I'm a 5th Ward resident. I live on the 1800 block of Ashland, a half-block from the Jackson and Emerson site. I'm also the Executive Director of the Rebuilding Exchange, so I know a little bit about what it means to take bound buildings. I'm here tonight to ask you to vote no on the demolition bid of the Emerson-Jackson site and direct staff to revise the city's procurement process to promote environmental sustainability and public health. The procurement process for this project has had a couple of flaws. The first is the prevailing wage requirement made it impossible for deconstruction providers to be cost-competitive. Deconstructing the site is more labor-intensive and would have cost at least twice of what the winning bid is proposing, and you'd notice none of the bids were from deconstruction providers. We wouldn't have been competitive. And the second is environmental sustainability, reuse, and workforce development was not part of the scoring metric for proposals. There's no incentive for people to promote reuse and recycling, nor train folks for local jobs for these projects. Demolition is not a healthy option. With seven houses on the property, the city will throw away 350 tons of building material. This is the same amount of weight as throwing two and a half Boeing 787 airplanes in the trash. Secondly, demolition will smash up the material with heavy equipment, putting harmful particles into the air such as mold, asbestos, and lead. Young children have the most serious risk of illness, and the Emerson-Jackson site is right behind an elementary school bus stop and on the walking path for many young people walking to Haven Middle School and ETHS, including my 11-year-old daughter. The kids are going to breathe in a bunch of harmful dust. Finally, there is a lot of reusable material. I've walked the site. There's lumber, flooring, lighting, radiators, and the best part, there is a 100-year-old barn, an Evanston, Illinois barn, with a ton of barn wood and a story to tell of the 5th Ward and the commerce of the 5th Ward at that time. There's a fair amount that can be salvaged and repurposed by our community. I'm unaware that the city of Evanston has ever done anything but demolish its assets. That needs to change. This is a unique project, and it provides the city an opportunity to develop a procurement process based on its values, as well as provide an example that Evanston residents can and should follow. And while I don't love the eyesore, I have a block from my house, I think it's worth the wait to do this right. So please vote no and ask staff to come up with a more environmentally healthy solution. Thanks very much.
Thank you very much. That concludes those who signed up in person, so we now move to those who are here in person but signed up online. That will be Eric Passit, followed by Suzanne Ali, and then Catherine Gottsick.
All right. My name is Eric Passit, and I'm a citizen of the 4th Ward. I'm also the owner of North Shore Apartments and Condos, and I'm here to speak up against the bag tax. I have no skin in this at all, except for that I'm a citizen of Evanston, and I am getting pretty disgusted by some of these proposals being by the City Council. It's about as anti-business-friendly as they come. I was actually told by one of the board members, or City Council members, that was stated in the Evanston Now that we should, you know, if we don't like this, we should shop in Evanston and, I mean, shop in Wilmette and live in Wilmette. It's almost exact quotes. And that's about as anti-business-friendly as they come. And, you know, I mean, as you know, four, five more businesses closed in downtown Evanston, and they're for a lot of different reasons, probably not, nothing to do with this at all. However, we are struggling, and it's just another bureaucracy on top of it. And it's about as, like I said, it's about as anti-business-friendly as they come. Plus, I don't know if anybody's aware of this, you guys changed refuse companies a couple months ago, and there was a couple days where our buildings did not have dumpsters. I can't tell you how much garbage was thrown on the floor because we had no dumpsters. About a year of this bag, plastic bags, just because we had no dumpsters. And, I mean, there's no recycling, there was no dumpsters for garbage, nothing. I mean, I could tell you how much garbage was in a week, and it was, that would take care of all the plastic bags for a year in this town. So I'm just, you know, it's, I think enough is enough with all of this. So thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Suzanne Ali, who will be followed by Catherine Gottsick, and then Charles Smith.
I appreciate the clarification that Wilmette comment was for you and not generally.
We'll continue with public comment.
Anyway, my name is Susanna. I'm one of the owners of Dave's Down to Earth Rock Shop, and I have talked to every one of you, I believe, during the last month, and you're nice enough to take at least five minutes of your time to discuss my position on the bag tax. I've stated in the last meeting that I think the bag tax is something like the owner of Hune stated. It's very hard for us to try to give to the customers. We're frontline, my personnel is the ones that would have to collect it. I did a mini survey during the month for December with customers that came in and said, hey, do you live in Evanston? And if they said yes, I say, well, how would you feel now you're walking out with five boxes and I'm giving you a bag because you have five boxes? Now I'm going to tell you, you owe me 15 cents. And I go, I'd be mad because I just spent $200 with you. And I'm like, yeah, but the city of Evanston wants me to collect it. And they just kind of, and they're like, oh, I don't like that idea. I said, well, then call your councilperson. And I know when I talk to all of you that there are some ideas about maybe we could make it where it's no plastic bags. I know one of the aldermen didn't like that, because I also like Perron's little plastic bags, you can see the gold box inside with chocolate. But also, we talked about, you know, could it be for bigger stores that maybe had a scanning system? We don't. We handwrite our receipts. We live down up to our Dave's Down to Earth Rock Shop. We don't, we don't have a way of scanning our items. It's impossible for what we sell. So I just want to plead with you guys, if there's another way to do it. We talked about positive reinforcement instead of negative reinforcement. I'm willing to, for a month, give out 10 cents to every single customer to bring their own bag. It's not about the money, it's about the bookkeeping, and it's about looking good to customers who come in from out of state or just local customers who come in that we don't feel like we're niggling to them, like niggle and diming them to death, because you guys all know how I feel about parking and the parking rates, but that's not for today's discussion. So thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Catherine Gottsick, who will be followed by Charles Smith, and then Patrick Donnelly.
Hello, and thank you very much for hearing my comment. I also was at the last meeting, and I very much appreciate your service. I'm Catherine Gottsick, Executive Director of the Main Dumpster Mile, the Business District in Southeast Evanston. Annie Coakley of Downtown Evanston is on vacation in Michigan, or else she would have been here as well. She and I have been in contact today about the bag tax issue, and we share strong concerns. Let me tell you about the Main Dumpster Mile, for those of you who don't know. There are 250, over 250 businesses in the MDM, including 120-ish retail and restaurant storefronts and studios. Of those 120 storefronts, only about a dozen or so have any sort of corporate or regional support. This district is truly a small business district where the vast majority of the businesses are locally and independently owned. And importantly, very, very many of them are aligned with the objective of the bag tax and willing to work with staff on a non-tax-related solution. My mission, as charged by both my partners in the Economic Development Department at the city and my own Board of Directors, is first and foremost to retain the small business character of our district and to support the small businesses themselves as well as I can. I am here to oppose the bag tax. I watched the list of businesses that closed their door this past week in Evanston with real discomfort. I gave to the Edso's GoFundMe because it seems they no longer have a rainy day fund, and that sounds familiar with my businesses. These past couple of weeks have me very concerned that the curve of COVID damage cannot yet be measured. Everyone who was surviving on COVID assistance is still discovering their tolerance for the new normal, and clearly not everyone can tolerate it. And as Susanna said, and Ellen as well, I believe the admin required for this of the businesses is more burdensome than you think it is. It's not easy. Adding any chilling effect on small businesses right now makes the new normal even less tolerable. A 15 cent tax will, I fear, result in just that chilling effect, and the extra burden will result in quicker burnout. I strongly encourage you to consider the effect on small businesses in today's up-to-the-minute context and to find a way to work with the small businesses instead of against them. And Annie Coakley says ditto. All right, thank you. Goodbye.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Charles Smith, who will be followed by Patrick Donnelly. Is Mr. Smith still here?
Certainly, yes. But they did both sign up for, is either Mr. Smith or Mr. Donnelly here?
Seeing that they're both, it looks like, gone, we now move, pardon me, we now move on to those who are seeking to give comment online. We will begin with Sharon Fagan, who will be followed by Darlene Cannon, and then Kelsey Bednar. It looks like Ms. Fagan may not be online at this time, so we'll then go on to Darlene Cannon, who will be followed by Kelsey Bednar, and then Leslie Williams.
Thank you. Darlene Cannon, 2nd Ward. I believe the community deserves to hear sooner rather than later about the plan to repair the harm to the Black employees. There's been discussion about hiring a diversity, equity, inclusion person for $200,000. So I ask you, how is that going to repair the income disparities and wealth gap the city has allowed to happen to the Black employees for decades? How is hiring a DEI person going to stop the harassment of Black employees because of the Black employee report? Unless we have leadership and a council that is bold enough to terminate the oppressive leadership, it will continue to be business as usual, and these issues will only be resolved by lawsuits. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Kelsey Bednar, who will be followed by Leslie Williams.
Okay. Hi, everyone. Thank you for allowing us to comment today. My name's Kelsey. I'm the manager of Welsh Natural Health, which is up on Central Street, and I am a resident in the 3rd Ward. We just wanted to share our perspective, like other small business owners have done tonight, that, you know, shopping locally already feels cost-prohibitive for a large contingent of consumers, especially as we're moving towards this post-pandemic world. The cost of goods has risen significantly across many sectors, and customers have noticed. Every time prices increase for any reason, shoppers turn away from local businesses to cheaper online options. Even if 15 cents is not a financial burden for a particular customer, that is one last straw on top of a challenging parking situation and on Central Street, you know, challenges with traffic that's created by Northwestern events. Anything that creates a negative perception of shopping in Evanston, whether or not it's cost prohibitive in every instance, we feel is bad for business and for our community. Small, local businesses are the lifeblood of Evanston and a significant part of what makes Evanston a thriving, unique, and attractive community. We wonder why the city has not seriously considered incentives for people to be environmentally conscious local shoppers and reserved taxes perhaps for businesses like Amazon, who bring a lot of waste to this community without adding any value to it. Planning to tax Evanston patrons for bags will drive people away from our businesses, and it will drive them toward what are, in our opinion, worst environmental offenders. At present, I'm not aware of any plan that the city has shared for managing waste or pollution created by online retailers like Amazon who deliver within our zip codes. So if we end up driving local shoppers to these online retailers, we wonder if that's really an environmental win in the end. We urge the city to reconsider the tax on recyclable and compostable bags in favor of education and incentives that might encourage Evanston shoppers to continue shopping in Evanston while doing their part environmentally. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The final speaker is Leslie Williams.
Hello, Mayor Bis and City Council. I'm speaking on behalf of the Community Alliance for Better Government, and I'm speaking in support of Ordinance 2023, reposed ban on cashless businesses in Evanston. Although there are not many of these yet, this is a growing trend with serious implications for low-income, disabled, and unbanked citizens. Requiring that all businesses serve customers to use cash is clearly an equity issue. Cashless businesses have been banned in Philadelphia, San Francisco, New York City, and the states of Massachusetts, New Jersey, and Rhode Island, and they are opposed to discriminatory by both the ACLU and the NAACP. The sponsor of the New York Ordinance stated that a cashless business model is an expression of institutionalized racism insofar as it disproportionately excludes people of color, who tend to have less access to credit and debit, and therefore have a diminished ability to purchase goods and services in an increasingly cashless marketplace. A cashless business model, however well-intentioned, could have a discriminatory effect on the underbanked, unbanked, immigrants who have no documentation, on homeless people who have no permanent address, and on communities of color that live in poverty. While we appreciate the challenges faced by small businesses and concerns about theft, there is little evidence that allowing cash transactions will significantly increase security risks. On the other hand, requiring patrons to use electronic payments exposes those users to security risks which they should not be forced to accept. Given Evanston's stated goals of eliminating institutional racism and promoting racial and social equity, CEBG enthusiastically supports this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes public comment for the evening. The next item on our agenda is under the category of Special Orders of Business, of which we have one. SP1 is a discussion on the 5th Ward School and Community Center situation. Could I have a motion simply to initiate the discussion?
Sure, move.
Second.
Councilmember Newsma moves that we discuss this item. Councilmember Reed, seconds. I believe we begin with a presentation from staff.
Honorable members of the City Council, City Manager, my name is Laura Biggs. I'm the city engineer. I'm here to provide an update on where we are with the 5th Ward School/Community Center So this is the, just a really quick recap, this is the property that comprises the, what I would refer to as the Foster site, which includes, the north is to the right side of the page. So the top, purple area is Family Focus. The greenish area in the middle is where Fleetwood Jordan is, and the yellowish part is the Foster Field, which is owned by the school district. So in this way, you can see the breakout that at this site, three different entities own property. And we presented a number of options the last time we were here. This first option shows sort of the original presentation by the school district to build a new 5th Ward School on the Foster Field site. Again, north is to the right side of the page, so along Simpson, they would build the school. And you can see from this area that that would remove most of the green space from the site. However, it is certainly possible that the city could just move, and the school district could move forward in a partnership to make this happen. However, we also had other options developed where we reconstructed Fleetwood Jordan in other locations on the site to maintain a green space. Option 2 here shows the buildings on the north and east end of the site to maintain a center green space. Option 3 shows that green space being at the north end of the site. Option 4 shows Fleetwood Jordan being reconstructed off-site to kind of get the maximum amount of green space on the existing Foster site, and there are a couple ways to orient the site in that location. When this was first presented to the city, the staff had a lot of concerns about losing the neighborhood green space, and this would substantially impact the city's abilities to offer programming at Fleetwood Jordan, which serves a vulnerable population and provides a lot of programs for seniors and children through summer camp and after-school and food programs as well. So on August 8th, the City Council approved a resolution to enter into an MOU with the school district to discuss how we could partner. We also entered into a contract with Cordigan Clark, the architect that supports the school district, and they're moving forward with a new 5th Ward School. We worked with them to develop these options. On December 6th, we had a community meeting, and from that, there were a lot of opinions raised, but not a lot was decided. That opened, at that time, we opened a community survey to ask some questions about what people might prefer to see on the site. That survey closed on December 15th. As a result of the community survey, we received 342 responses, and we asked participants to self-identify into three different categories: 5th Ward, Black Caribbean, and Latinx. So there's probably some overlap between these categories. They're not mutually exclusive. And the survey data, which is attached to the memo in the packet, can be interpreted quite a number of different ways. I know doubt of that, but there were just some very general conclusions that the staff pulled out. One, there did seem to be a desire to preserve the green space that would not remain if Fleetwood Jordan stays in its current location and District 65 builds a 5th Ward School on the Foster Field site. So there were four options, approximately 25, 30% picked the first one to just leave that. The remaining three options added up to much more than that. There was a slight preference for locating the buildings closer to Foster Street than Simpson Street, but that was not really an overwhelming majority. There was also a slight preference for the swimming pool, a swimming pool to be added to the amenities offered at Fleetwood Jordan, as well as maintaining a playground space. There were other amenities that different populations and demographics requested, which included basketball courts and soccer field. So from that, what we mostly concluded is that we probably need to have a lot more public engagement to really understand the needs of the community in that area and determine what is the best option for the future of the Fleetwood Jordan building. For this reason, staff is recommending four steps to occur. The first is, one reason that we had very limited public engagement, we're racing through this at sort of a breakneck speed, is because District 65's schedule is a little bit more fixed, and it's very fast. It does not allot a lot of time for us to have discussions about joint uses. It doesn't allot a lot of time for us to be able to do the public engagement we need. As long as they do not build their building where Fleetwood Jordan is located, then they can proceed with some of their approvals, and we can spend more time trying to determine the best way to keep or reconstruct Fleetwood Jordan. And for that reason, we are recommending that we do figure out a way to separate from their schedule and move forward. To that end, we recommend that we hire a separate consultant. Because they are on a crazy schedule, their consultant, Cordigan Clark, is really focused on meeting their needs, as is appropriate. I mean, they were engaged first to meet the needs of District 65. However, we feel that the interests of the city would be best represented by hiring our own consultant. This is a process that takes a couple, typically about three months to do, so it would not be possible if we stay on the same schedule as District 65, but if we separate, it does provide us with a little bit more cushion, and we would be able to do that. and we would be able to do that. The third item is to expand the public engagement. The information we've gotten back now gives us a certain amount of information that indicates that not everybody is on board with just moving forward with the existing status quo of the school district building, the new school on the green space, and leaving no community park, really, to speak of. However, it's not really enough to tell us exactly what people want. And for that reason, we would recommend engaging in a much more robust community engagement process. And fourth, we have an existing MOU, Memorandum of Understanding, with the school district that indicated we would tell them exactly what we were doing by January 1st. They graciously allowed us a very small extension so that we could come to this meeting. However, we really need to negotiate how we are going to coordinate, amend that MOU so that they can move forward, and we can move forward with what we need to do. That, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Is there any discussion? We begin with Councilmember Burns.
So I think this was somewhat of a break from our understanding. And I kind of want to bring up Cordigan Clark, because this is a much rosier picture than I think is the reality, because a lot of the concepts rely on us, the city, making a decision about one of these concepts. And that, I mean, even without Cordigan Clark coming up, I think you can confirm that. I think this idea that we can't decide, that we don't need to decide soonish what direction we're going to take, and that that decision wouldn't impact the, what, whether or not Cordigan Clark and team can move forward in the way that they need to, I think is just not the reality. So either, Laura, if you could speak to that, or we do have a member from Cordigan Clark here today. But that's just the first thing we got to get clear on, because I've been a part of most of these discussions, and it is my understanding that we need to make a decision, because it's going to impact where parking lots are. Now, yes, there was some discussion about if we leave enough space between the building and between Fleet, you know, new Fleetwood Jordan building and the new school, that they could, that they could begin construction, and we could, and Fleetwood could remain during construction. But at some point, you know, that becomes a parking lot, or that becomes something else that they need to know now on what it becomes so that they can plan around it. And I don't think any of the concepts outside of one allow for us not to make a decision soonish. And that's been my understanding. So, and I see, you know, the gentleman, Cordigan Clark nodding his head. So I don't know where this came from, because I don't remember seeing that. Maybe I missed that in the packet. But I don't think, I think we have to make a decision soon about what direction we're going to take.
I absolutely agree with you, and I think that is part of what we need to negotiate within the next few weeks on the MOU. But once you fix the location of their building, and they commit to a certain amount of providing certain amenities onsite, like parking onsite, or working out a deal with surrounding parking lots, it does provide you with some flexibility as to what actually happens with Fleetwood Jordan. So, for example, and I'm happy to listen to the Cordigan Clark person, too. I'm not trying to cut the conversation short. But if you look at this, the school district was willing to build this. Now, there are a lot better ways to lay out the site, and if they can agree to certain provisions, then we can have more time to figure out the site layout. And that can follow. Their criticality is to open the school district building in order to get the students to not be bused to other schools in order to start paying back their funding. So there may be some time period where our construction extends longer than would be ideal, but I think that is something that we would want to negotiate with the MOU upfront. And if you would still like to listen to the Cordigan Clark person discuss it?
I'm just, again, I, what you've described, I don't, you know, I understand that everything that you're saying is what we described would happen during the construction of the school to allow for more time, that would allow the existing Fleetwood to be there during part of the construction. But my understanding is it would always require us to make a decision about the future of Fleetwood Jordan. And I don't, I'm not hearing anything today that changes that, other than, yeah, we can go out and see if we can find enough parking lots for them to put cars during the interim. But that doesn't address any, a long-term solution that they'll need to know in advance of making decisions about whether or not they're going to put a 95, you know, space parking lot or something else. So again, anything, everything I'm hearing today is these are interim things that can be done, not long-term. And they need to make longer-term decisions about where they put things. And I don't think they can rely on nonexistent, at this point, agreements with churches and other people that have parking lots in the area in order to develop their construction plans. I just don't think that's realistic.
I think, my understanding is that that is what we commit to as part of the MOU. Over the next period of time, as we negotiate the MOU, we come up with options of what will be discussed and what we're partnering on, and what we're going to figure out, knowing that we, they have to move forward with the design of their building ASAP in order to break ground on their schedule. So I understand what you're saying. I just, the difference between option one, option two, where their building is located, and option 4A, for example, their building is located in approximately the same location. If the City Council decides to move forward, and we want to locate the building there, then there is a whole lot more other stuff that I think would be helpful to get public engagement on to better understand what it is that we are building for Fleetwood Jordan that best meets the needs of the community.
Yeah, that part I'm in agreement with. I'm just, I just, again, I think the way this was presented was much rosier in that I think they are, the discussions that we need to have with the community are still, I think, really are focused around, understand, the dilemma of trying to preserve the playfield still exists. And I don't think we'll be able to satisfy it with a combination of, at this point, nonexistent parking lease agreements with churches in the area. And so I'm saying, the dilemma is still the same, that if we are to preserve the playfield, which the study speaks to, on whether or not there's enough support at this stage to do it, I think we still need to have conversations with that. Of course, with the community, but I, there's some nuance here, and hopefully I've helped a bit. But that, this is, this was presented much rosier than I think is the reality. They're going to need to know what direction we're taking, what parking is available and isn't available in the next few weeks in order for them to make long-term decisions about where they put things on the site. So, but that's all for now. Thank you.
Are there any further questions? Councilmember Kelly.
Is the timeline available on the city's website that you went over at the beginning?
It's, no. It's not particularly a timeline. Some of that information may be included in the packet, but...
Okay, it'd be great if we could get that on the city's website. And you can just explain a little bit how this works in terms of the city and staff? Like, what department is, like, moving this? I mean, I'm a little fuzzy on, I know it's you, but who's, like, when you say staff is recommending these four steps? Like, it's a park, I know this involves Parks and Rec. I also know it involves facilities, but who's involved?
The City Manager's Office is taking the lead on this program, and they are being supported by Parks and Rec, which is providing input on to what types of programming they need in the building, and Capital Planning, which is part of Public Works, which provides support on how to implement a capital project.
And has it been brought to the Parks and Rec Board for discussion?
It has not.
Since you said Parks and Rec, is it going to?
I think that we are seeking to have a conversation tonight to understand people's concerns about this project and what the council would like to see done. And then, from that, we will put together a process for getting that done.
And then, also, like, finances? It sounds like there's some, and I know, you know, you discussed briefly in closed session, and we moved it to open, that, you know, some big numbers involved. Like, have you thought to discuss with the finance and budget to discuss how this would possibly be paid for?
Again, this has been on an extremely brief schedule, and we're just not really entirely certain what it is that we are doing yet. And for that reason, we have not taken it to the Budget and Finance Committee.
We're discussing it tomorrow. I believe Councilmember Kelly knows already, but yeah, we're discussing it tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Since no one else has your light on, I guess I'll ask a question that's, in a way, a follow-up on Councilmember Burns. Oh. Y'all, I'm not firing on all cylinders up here tonight. It's four weeks, and I forgot a lot of things. Councilmember Newsma.
Feel free to go ahead if you want.
No, no, I'm in the penalty box.
Steal your spotlight. Is there no possibility that the city and the school district could collaborate on kind of co-owning a facility, co-managing a facility, a single facility rather than two separate ones? If there's not, I'll drop the issue, which I've raised several times.
There has not been an easy way determined on how to manage building facilities, although there is some thought that if they needed overflow space, or we needed overflow space, we could share facilities. But we tend to need them all at the same time. But there has been a lot of discussion about the site. There's a lot of amenities on the site, like parking, that we have talked about how we would jointly share. And that, I think, is part of what we need to finalize in the MOU.
So I should drop my desire to have one master building for both entities?
It has a lot of, it's got a lot of challenges to do it that way.
All right. So I think, from what I'm seeing, I understand what you're saying is that the school district needs to know where they're going to build the building, sooner rather than later, because they're on their own very quick, probably too quick, in my opinion, timeline. But we still have some time to decide what we need to do, which would require some more public engagement. And consultants can help us sort through that public engagement process and conceptualize some options here. So I think what you're proposing makes sense to me.
I just want to say, building and parking lot.
So no one who's requesting, who has not yet spoken is requesting to speak, so we'll go back to Councilmember Burns with 45 seconds.
Just building and parking lot. It's not just building, that's all. Which is a huge, it's a lot of area, if you want to pull that back up.
Absolutely.
That's what makes this difficult. It's not just building.
So, yes, their parking lot is here, and there's been very preliminary discussions. I wouldn't say very preliminary. There has been a lot of discussion around parking. I don't think that we had finalized it because we were trying to understand what would come out of the community survey.
Does Family Focus have available parking?
That is actually part of the equation. Family Focus, we have had a lot of conversations with them. They're not really in a place where they can discuss moving in, you know, having a facility where all three of us are sharing a facility with either of us at this time. But there has been some discussion around parking, and I think that is part of the equation.
So, so let me ask, because I think that the issues that came up in the discussion between you and Councilmember Burns are really sort of the core issues, which is who needs to know what when? And so therefore, what do we have to decide by when? And what information, what input do we have from the community and other sources by the time that buzzer goes off? Your, what's on the slide basically says, staff is seeking direction to go back to District 65, renegotiate the MOU, and essentially, essentially kind of figure out a new timeline on which we can make these decisions, perhaps by narrowing down the universe of options so that they're all similar enough that they can kind of halfway move forward? Is that...
That, I think, is a really succinct way of putting it. They need certain information, and including, I think, where to locate the building. And we have received some feedback that we can provide them some very general terms and make that decision. But what happens to Fleetwood Jordan? And if we choose to reconstruct Fleetwood Jordan, what does that building include in it? That is still a little bit open for debate. I don't know that we've received enough feedback, and I don't think we've really received enough feedback entirely on what site amenities people are looking for. And so knowing that the school district's going to need certain things in the site, and being able to say, yes, locate your building, and we agree that we are going to work to make sure the site includes certain things, that I think we can do and execute in MOU, and then continue to work together. But the key, critical path thing that they need done is they need to start designing the building, because they need to go through our land use commission process in order to have approval to build the building. And they need to have that done and breaking ground in construction still this year. And so that is a really tight schedule.
Do you have, in this sort of sketched-out, revised approach, a sense of when this body would have to make a final decision about what path to take?
I think we would be negotiating with the school district pretty quickly and be back here in February, would be my guess, to finalize the MOU.
But then the MOU would say, and the Evanston City Council can make a final determination about which path to take later, right, or no?
I think that some discussions about what's going to happen to Fleetwood Jordan, the final determination would be done later. And what's going to happen on the site, except for parking. I do agree, that's something that we'll need to put some parameters around.
Yeah, the only thing I just want to add quickly before I wrap is that, in my own view, I mean, the discussion that we had was really interesting and robust. The survey data is interesting. I draw even fewer conclusions from the survey data than others. I don't think the, I don't personally think, for a number of reasons, partially because of how the second choices work, and partially just because of the small response size, especially in the cross tabs, I don't think it's clear from the survey what the community's preference is regarding the field. And I just, I think it's really important for a decision of this magnitude that we get the quantity and quality of input we need before just kind of rushing forward. Councilmember Burns with 40 seconds left.
Yes, I think, I think we need to be very specific about what professional surveying standards we're using to make this final determination, which I think, hopefully, staff, you can help with that. And like, what are we looking for? What is the number? And I think that should be guided by professional standards and not necessarily the opinions of folks up here, because we do not have the time. I know, again, that is somewhat being presented. We do not have time. We have to make decisions about where the building is. We keep saying that, but we keep also admitting the fact we do need to settle parking. This is an area that is already stressed with parking congestion, and we will not move forward without necessary parking. We will not move forward without necessary field space. We have enough information from the community that says there is strong enough support for those who feel, who participate in the survey, that they want to preserve the playfield. And if, in, and we need some time to think about how we are able to achieve that, allowing, giving District 65 the idea that they can move forward, even if it ends up in, in the playfield being eliminated, is not, is not where the community is, for the survey that we do have in front of us, right? And so...
Just respectfully, I don't read the survey that way.
That's, but that's fine. I just read the actual numbers like that. Not your opinion of it, but just the way people responded, right? And the more, if you also look at black residents who live in the Fifth Ward, and Latinx members who live in the Fifth Ward, even more people decided, even that group determined that they were more open to some of the other concepts. So just looking at the people who responded, as to not diminish or act as though those responses don't matter at all, that, there was a clear indication that there is an interest in preserving the playfield. So if you want to go back out yet again, we need to do that soon, and we need to determine what those professional survey standards are. How many people are we looking for? Let's give clear direction, and not just go off of the kind of amateur opinions of all of us really up here. What are those standards? How much input are we looking for to make that decision? Because we need to make it quickly.
If the City Manager has a comment?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to answer Councilmember Kelly's question about Parks and Rec Board. This item, this issue was on the October, November, December agendas for Parks and Rec Board. Just wanted to clarify.
Thank you.
It's going to be discussed. This was already brought to Park, okay, thank you very much. very much. Appreciate that.
Is there any further discussion?
And city manager, Stowe, if you could respond to my question. Yes, there is. City manager, Stowe, if you could--
And your time is up, so that'll be your last.
I'll take what I need. City manager, Stowe, can you respond to what I just said, that what, can you lead point on, from city staff's perspective, determining what should have been done already, but determining what professional standard we're going to use to determine how much is adequate feedback to make a decision that we'd need to make very shortly? And to be honest, we should have been able to make that decision by now. What, can you take the lead on that?
Sure, happy to do so on that. I just, I think there is a little bit of concern that I think only 88 recipient, respondents were identified as 5th Ward residents. So I think we're looking to, to get additional feedback, just because it is a relatively small sample size.
Okay. Can you, can you identify a path to having either my consultants or whoever it is identify what standard we're going to go with, and then present that to us through email or however you need to?
Sure, happy to do so and do so quickly.
Thank you.
Councilmember Revel.
Well, I would like to, I guess, remind the chair that we do allow council members to exceed their five-minute time limit if, at the, basically, the indulgence of the rest of the council. And since this is such a really critical issue for the 5th Ward council member, I personally would be understanding if he needed more time. But having said that, I guess I'm interested in, so this issue is going to be discussed at the Finance and Budget Committee this week?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow? And so there, the committee's going to be looking at, because I have to say, there's a pretty staggering numbers in terms of the, of the costs that we'd be undertaking, committing to with, with any of these options, except the one leaving Fleetwood, where it is. So, so we expect the committee to talk about GO bonds or, I mean, I don't, I don't know what the committee's--
No, absolutely, yeah. And I mean, and I think it's, I don't know if it's with objection, if I won't have any more time. But again, and I think it's really important to state that, that even before the, the school wrapped up making their final recommendations for school in the 5th Ward, and staff can confirm this, we have been having conversations internally about building out Fleetwood, right? About looking into going out or up. And so, which is why if you look in the 5th, 5th redevelopment plan, there's $24 million set aside to do just that. You can look at it. So, again, the, the goal, whether it's to do it in the existing building, or to find another site, is to reinvest in this building. My, my, my understanding in the beginning is, is that with, if you look back at 2012 when the school was being built, it was a much smaller school. It was a K-5 building, and the green space was in the back. Just look at it. Right? Now what we're seeing, and again, this is at no fault to the school, they have to figure out where to put all these pieces. There is a school and a, and a, in a parking lot, right? So back in 2012, there's this idea that we could preserve, still preserve some playfield, but a real playfield as well as Fleetwood Jordane. That does not look like the case with Concept 1. But mind you, we've still been having conversations internally about reinvesting in the space. The space does not address or accommodate the unique needs of this area. This is a dense and heavily, this is a dense area in terms of social service needs, which is why the Fleetwood Jordane, Edwin B. Jordane, who the building is in part named after, talked about even then, right, having a three-story community center with a boulden alley and all types of other amenities back then. What we see today, although it has truly served the community well, is a watered-down version of what even then the, the council member understood was needed in this area. And so, again, all of this matters, knowing where, you know, because I'm 100% still going to pursue reinvesting in this, in this building and expanding it. But where do we go? Right? Because once we talk about expanding it, we have to talk about moving into areas that now District 65 owns. So it, and, and depending on what we decide to do moving forward, District 65, again, this might be a proposal that staff will reject if anybody else was, was to request that much site utilization. So why not take a step back and really look at, okay, we're in 2023, what is the best way to configure this area so that it truly is a good, and good in terms of city plans, but also addresses, finally, the true needs of the 5th Ward? That is what we should be doing. So I just, I want to make sure that that's clear. Either way, these other things were going to be pursued, and so we were going to be here no matter what. That's all. Thank you.
Councilmember Revel still has the floor.
And just please, moving forward, if we need, this is to my colleagues, whatever you, you knew we were doing a survey in the first place. As you know, we're doing these things. Way in as we're doing this. You know what? This is what I'm looking for. This is what I would like to see. You know, we're on a tight timeline, and, and, you know, I just, I don't like things to pop up randomly. You knew we were doing the survey. You should have weighed in a while ago about what you would like to see, and then we could have pushed for that.
Seeing that no one else is requesting to speak for the first time, we go back to Councilmember Kelly with four minutes and 15 seconds left.
I just want to respond to Councilmember Revel. I agree with you 100%. We can't possibly give any guidance tomorrow at Finance and Budget. There's not even any information. There's not even a packet. All it says is discussion of. So I just want to make that clear. We'll obviously need subsequent meetings with information to read ahead of time. I mean, I, I would have liked for our committee members to have had a packet of information to review before going to discuss it tomorrow. I feel like that's not really the most responsible way to proceed. But, so, we will absolutely have to have at least one or two more meetings with Finance and Budget with, with material to read ahead of time. And then just to sort of dovetail a little bit with Mayor Piss's comment regarding the importance of the community involvement, what are the plans for further community engagement?
I think that is something that we have to develop, that is not yet put together.
And who's, who's developing those plans for community engagement?
I would work with Parks and Rec, the City Manager's Office, and Councilmember Burns, as well as the school district.
Okay, thank you.
Just wanted to say that the, Hattesh is out of town. We planned, a few of us planned to talk about this enough to where we would have, we would have discussed it enough to have something in the packet for the Finance Budget and Budget Committee meeting. A few of those meetings I had to reschedule, and then the last one, I think city staff felt uncomfortable because Hattesh is out of town. And so it was, you know, so that's, that's how that occurred, which is why I asked today for us not to talk about, you know, any finance-related issues, because we don't, we have not received any information. We haven't had the opportunity to have that question, so, that discussion. So we'll be having the first discussion on finance tomorrow at the Finance and Budget Committee meeting.
But we have no material, correct?
Yeah, it'll be from scratch. Again, they, I tried to have something prepared for the Finance and Budget Committee, but Hattesh is out of town. And it was staff's, I think, opinion that it wouldn't be appropriate to have a discussion related to this without his participation.
So it seems like it would have been more appropriate to postpone that till we had material to review to have a more fruitful conversation.
To postpone the Finance and Budget Committee meeting, you're saying?
Not the committee meeting, but this agenda item.
Yeah, disappearing. I mean, I, it's, it's the, whatever the committee wants. But I was also frustrated that we couldn't have those discussions, but whatever the chair wants to do with the issue. But at the very least, we can discuss what people, what people need, what they're looking for, the type of information that they wanted to follow with maybe.
Is there any further discussion on this item? Do you have the guidance you need?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thanks for the presentation.
Thank you.
This now brings us to the consent agenda. Are there any items that members would like to remove from the consent agenda?
A4.
A4.
H1.
H1.
A11.
Whoa. Did you say A11, council member?
H2 and H2, and A12.
Did you say H1?
H1, H2, A12, A4 and A2, but I think--
Oh, you said H12 also?
Yes, please.
Oh. So at this time, I have A2, A4, A11, A12, A13, A14, A15, A16, A17, H1, and H2. Anything else?
I'm sorry, somebody's looking at A6.
Nope. Have you? Do you want A6 off?
I'm sorry, I didn't realize I didn't have my mic on. Yes, I'll take A6.
Okay. So now I have A2, A4, A6, A11 through 17, H1 and H2. Anything else? Going once, going twice? In that case, I would entertain a motion.
I move the consent agenda minus those items.
Second.
Councilmember Reed moves the consent agenda minus items A2, A4, A6, A11, A12, A13, A14, A15, A16, A17, H1 and H2. Councilmember Harris seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, with a clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Burns? Councilmember Saffronin?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Haraqaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries, and the consent agenda, save for the aforementioned items, is passed. This brings us now to item A2. Councilmember Kelly, would you care to make a motion on this item?
I move item A2, approval of BMO Harris Amazon credit card activity.
Second.
Councilmember Kelly moves approval of the BMO Harris Amazon credit card activity. Councilmember Newsma seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, with a clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Burns? Councilmember Saffronin?
Aye, abstain.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Haraqaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
With seven voting in favor, none voting against, and one abstention, the motion carries, and the BMO Harris Amazon credit card activity is approved. This brings us to item A4. Councilmember Kelly, would you care to make a motion here?
I move item A4, approval of contract award to Recon specs LLC for property demolition services.
Second.
Councilmember Kelly moves approval of contract award to Recon specs LLC for property demolition services, item A4. Councilmember Harris seconds. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Harris.
Just stated as before, there's a provision that, oh, sorry, funds are ported from the West Evanston Tiff to the 5th, 5th Tiff, and then that they will be ported back in 2023 when funds are available. I just want to be real clear that that, make sure that that happens. Thank you.
Councilmember Newsma, followed by Burns.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have some concerns, as raised by Ina Gutierrez, of the rebuilding exchange with regards to the environmental impacts of this demolition. And I would like to move this back to staff to rebid with a more robust process that takes those environmental considerations into account.
So is that a motion to, to--
Is that, what would the, what would the appropriate motion be?
Mr. Cummings?
The, good evening again, Nicholas Cummings, Corporation Council. The appropriate motion would be to commit it back to committee, and for the committee to oversee staff to rebid it out.
All right, we'll make that motion then.
Councilmember Newsma moves to re-refer item A4 to the Administration of Public Works Committee to oversee a rebidding process by staff. Councilmember Revel seconds. Is there any discussion on this motion? Councilmember Revel.
Well, I really appreciated Ina Gutierrez's comments, and it seems to me she's suggesting not only that we look at this particular item and the bid process, but that we rethink the kinds of criteria that we look for when, when bid, when we ask companies to bid for, particularly for demolition, that we have additional criteria that by which we rate the various proposals.
Seeing no further discussion on this motion, would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Saffronin?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Haraqaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
With nine voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries, and item A4 is referred back to the Administration of Public Works Committee to oversee a rebidding process. This brings us now to item A6. Councilmember Kelly, would you care to make a motion here?
I move item A6, approval of a contract award with Tesco Associates Incorporated for the study and designation of Howard Street Special Service Area, RFP 22-65.
Second.
Councilmember Kelly moves passage of item A6. Councilmember Harris seconds. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Reed.
Yeah, I just wanted to pull this off, to take a second to really highlight the work of staff and Paul. This has been something that's been kind of tossed around for years, that Howard Street would get an SSA. And pretty soon after I got into office, Paul and I went for a walk down Howard, and one of the first things he brought up was, hey, I've got this really neat idea about, at the time, it was about doing a joint SSA between the Chicago side and Evanston, and that would have been really novel and new. In fact, I think that'd be the first multi-jurisdiction SSA in Illinois at least. And so we put a lot of time into looking into this. Hi, Paul. I'm just praising your work. And so we put a lot of time into thinking and talking about that. And over the course of, until we got here, we, over that time, we determined that maybe it wasn't the best course of action to work with Chicago, and that we'd be able to have a lot more local control if we were to just use the Chicago or the Evanston Tiff. You know, the Chicago Tiff is pretty lar-- SSA is pretty large. And so just really, just wanted to take a second to, to highlight Paul and, and the whole team. I think this is going to be really big for, we also just tonight made a purchase of a building on Howard Street, a laundromat and parking lot.
Not yet.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did you pull that off?
Yep.
Oh, I didn't realize you pulled it off. But we will be making that purchase tonight. And, you know, this is all a part of huge revitalization that has been going on before my term. It's certainly continuing into this term, and I think it's making Howard a more desirable and safer place to live and congregate. So just wanted to highlight Paul's work and the whole economic development team, and thank the council for being supportive of what's going on on Howard Street. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, with a clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Burns? Councilmember Saffronin?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Haraqaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries, and item A6 is passed. This brings us now to item A11. Councilmember Kelly, would you care to make a motion here?
I move item A11, approval of change order number four with Boulder Contractor Incorporated for the 30-inch transmission main project construction bid 2136.
Second.
Councilmember Kelly moves passage of item A11. Councilmember Harris seconds. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Kelly.
So I, I just want to point out for the record that this is a really large change order. That we're talking about a 20% change order, like $2 million on a $10 million project, that this should, this is problematic and needs to be acknowledged, so to figure out how this doesn't happen going forward. Certainly, the engineering consulting service has errors and omissions insurance, and I certainly hope, though I know Mr. Stonebeck said he wasn't hopeful, but I certainly hope we do everything we can. If it was their fault for inappropri-- for inaccurately giving us an estimate on that, then I hope that we can recover some of that money, because that's really too much for a change order. That's all. I just wanted to state that for the record. And I hope, when might we get feedback regarding our contact with the consultant as, as to whether or not they will pay for part of this?
We had an initial discussion this afternoon with council to look at building a case against the engineer to see if the errors and omission insurance could be paid. It was not exactly optimistic, but we did provide the materials for review, and so we hope to have-- hope to have an answer next week.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Burns? Councilmember Suffernan?
Aye.
Councilmember Revelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Herakaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and item A11 is passed. This moves us now to item A12. Councilmember Kelly, would you care to make a motion here?
I move item A12, Resolution 5R23, authorizing the city manager to execute a contract for the purchase of real property at 72939 Howard Street.
Councilmember Kelly moves passage of item A12, Councilmember, Resolution 5-R-23, oh, five, what a low number. Councilmember Harris seconds. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Suffernan?
Thanks. I had a question for staff about the rationale and justification for the purchase price exceeding the appraised value.
I'm, oh, there's Paul.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, city clerk. Councilmember Suffernan, the appraisal was done on the land, so that appraised at 750,000. The, the business itself has a value, and the city's not interested in the business, but the business owners were in the market to sell the entire business to another laundromat operator. So in order for us to be in the mix on the acquisition, we had to pay more than just the land value, because otherwise, they would have sold it to another laundromat.
Okay. And the city is going to be responsible for the disposition of the equipment?
Yes. Frankly, unfortunately, it'll probably fall into my court, and we'll have to, there are ways to, I've already done some research on this. I don't have, previously, Councilmember Nusma had asked that we try to determine a value. I don't have that value yet, but there are resources to sell used laundry equipment.
And have we successfully disposed of equipment in circumstances like this previously?
We have a previous experience with the unfortunate demise of the French Cafe on Howard Street. We were able to sell off some of the equipment and furnishings that Pascal left behind at 633 Howard.
Right.
Doing a straight-up Craigslist kind of.
And did we sell that for less, substantially less than we paid for it?
You don't, you don't make a lot of money on the equipment.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Reed.
Yeah, I certainly appreciate those questions, and I'm actually glad, in some regard, that you pulled this off, because it gives an opportunity to, again, highlight Paul, and, but also to highlight the family who chose to sell this building. I mean, we came to exec previously about another deal, and we, a potential deal to create a very substantial development on Howard Street. You know, we currently own a city-owned parcel at 727-729 Howard. You know, that parcel, we met with some developers, was not large enough to create affordable housing, or really anything that would work in this market on it, on, by itself. And we were told, well, if you get some of the parcels next door, we can really put something together that is, you know, gets you to some deep affordability also, but provides some mixed unit, mixed income market rate units. What's key here, you asked about the value above the appraisal, is Paul said yes, the family was operating a business, and they were looking to sell the business. It was actually fortunate that they happened to be in the process of considering retiring and willing to sell the business at this point, so it was really good circumstance. But they sold it to us, understanding that they had the opportunity to sell the business for a lot more than what we bought it for. So I almost think this family, I want to commend that family, the Yoon family, for, you know, giving up hundreds of thousands of dollars, or, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars that they could have made from selling the business, to sell it to us at this reduced price, because they understood the vision. They understood that Howard Street needs development, and they wanted to be a part of that. And that's why they even held off on folks who were in the process of asking them about acquisition of their business. So I'd really want to highlight that family, say thank you for being a part of the fabric of our community. They currently live in Skokie, but they've operated on Howard Street for a long time, and they plan to move to Chicago soon, is when they retire. And so I just want to say thank you to that family, and really excited for this purchase and what comes next.
Seeing that no one is requesting to speak for the first time, we go back to Councilmember Suffernan with four minutes and 40 seconds left.
And I appreciate that. The funding source is TIF? That can only be spent?
Correct.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that. I will point out that Evanston taxpayers now are invested in a laundromat at the OX and a laundromat on Howard Street that we're going to put to sleep. So we are in the laundromat business, we're in the laundromat equipment disposal business, and as previous experience has shown, maybe that's not always the best way to go. But hey, I hope this works out, and I understand that the TIF money can only be used in this area, so best of luck to everyone, but I'll be voting no.
Councilmember Kelly.
So it's entirely paid for with TIF money? Okay, thank you.
Correct.
Seeing that no one is requesting to speak for the first time, we go back to Councilmember Reed with three minutes left.
Thank you, and I won't belabor this anymore, but I do just want to say that this isn't an acquisition, we're getting in the business of, in the laundry business, but this is what this is, is supporting development on Howard Street, affordable housing, economic development along Howard Street. And so I don't want the media or anybody else to be confused about what's going on here. We're not looking to own or operate a laundromat, we are looking to do what only the city can do, which is make deep investments in making our community a stronger and better place throughout. And this is, by getting in the game and purchasing some properties ourselves, that's what helps us get to that goal. So thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Burns? Councilmember Suffernan?
No.
Councilmember Revelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Herakaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
No.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma? Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Oh, Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
With seven voting in favor and two voting against, the motion carries and item A12 is passed. This brings us now to items A13 through 17, which are a variety of different issues, mostly related to liquor, but not all. There is a, they're all pulled from the agenda for potential suspension of the rules for introduction and action. If there's no, if everyone's comfortable with all of them, we can do that in a single package, or if folks want to separate them out, of course, that's fine as well. But I would entertain a motion at this time on either some or all of, a suspension of rules on either some or all of items A13, 14, 15, 16, and 17.
Mr. Mayor, I move suspension of the rules to consider those items for introduction and action in one vote.
Second.
Councilmember Nusma moves to suspend the rules that items A13, A14, A15, A16, and A17 may all receive introduction and action this evening. Councilmember Kelly, seconds. Is there any discussion on the motion to suspend the rules? Seeing none, will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Burns? Councilmember Suffernan?
Aye.
Councilmember Revelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Herakaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries. So now I would entertain a motion to pass those items.
I move approval of items, all of those items.
Second.
Councilmember Reed moves approval for both introduction and action, so this is a final action of items A13, A14, A15, A16, and A17. Councilmember Harris, seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Burns? Councilmember Suffernan?
Aye.
Councilmember Revelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Herakaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and items A13, A14, A15, A16, and A17 are all passed for both introduction and action, and therefore are, have received their final votes here at the city council. This brings us now to item H1.
I will move item H1, which is ordinance 1023, amending the city code and creating section 3, 222, retail single-use bag tax.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Councilmember Reed moves passage of H1, ordinance 1-0-23. Councilmember Herakaris, seconds. Is there any discussion? We begin with Councilmember Reed. If anyone else wants to get in the queue, there's a golden opportunity to hop to the front of the line right now. Councilmember Nusma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As an environmental advocate and champion of our CARP initiative, you know, I am fully in support of the, of getting folks to use replaceable or reusable shopping bags. You know, I understand the objective of this ordinance, and I am in support of that objective. However, as the council member of a ward in which there are a number of small businesses, I cannot support this ordinance as currently drafted. Given the precarious state of some of our small businesses, still struggling to reemerge from a COVID economy, that I, I'm not comfortable imposing any additional burdens or hassles or headaches on those small businesses. For that reason, I cannot oppose, I cannot support the ordinance as drafted. Councilmember Revelle and I have discussed some potential amendments that we have shared with this body individually via email earlier today. I won't make a motion at this point yet, but reserve the right to do that after some So that's all for now.
Yeah, Councilmember Revelle, if you want to go first, I'm waiting on Luke to let me into the Zoom.
Councilmember Revelle.
Well, I have to agree with all the comments made by my colleague, Councilmember Nusma. I do think that this, as drafted, it would put an undue burden on our smaller businesses in Evanston. And so, number one, I would want to have the bag fee ordinance apply to larger, larger businesses, businesses of 10,000 square feet or larger, which is, which are the businesses that are currently subject to our, our bag ordinance. So that's, that's, for starters, that's the first, the first item I'd like us to consider.
Can I ask to clarify? I don't know if any other lights are on.
There's a lot of lights on, so I'll put you in the queue. Next is Councilmember Reed.
Yes. So, thank you, and I want to level set here. You know, we, we certainly, there's agreement that, you know, that the environmental impact here is important, that removing plastic bags from our community will have a significant, both environmental impact, but also just community, a standard of living impact, because we know plastic bags end up, you know, in the, in either the wrong waste stream, or they're not in a waste stream at all, and they're just literally in a stream. And, and what the research has shown, and I went into far more detail during the committee meeting, but, is that a tax is extremely effective at reducing plastic bag usage and bag usage. We know that paper bags upfront have a larger energy usage than plastic bags, depending on how thin the plastic bag is, but as far as for our community, those paper bags at some point will biodegrade and are compostable. And so they have less of an impact, but certainly still an impact on our community, and certainly an impact on our environment. You know, I heard a bit of, you know, the, some of the biggest concerns, and I've taken some time, I'm sad that, well, not sad, unfortunately, a lot of the business owners, small business owners are very busy, and they didn't have time to sit around and wait for this to come up. But, you know, I had an opportunity to speak with many of them. I spoke with the woman from Yoon, I spoke with the woman from Dave's Rock Shop, and other folks have reached out. And I hear the concerns. The major concern that I hear, one of the concerns that I've heard even today is there's a bit of what-aboutism. There is a, well, what about idling cars, or what about this, or what about that? And, and that does not, you know, us tackling this issue, which we agree, even Councilmember Nusma and Councilmember Nguyen have, I'm sorry, Revelle, I'm sorry, have agreed that, you know, this is an important issue. And so I think we're on the same page as far as, you know, what the vision is. But the biggest hurdle that I've heard, that I think could be reasonable, is the question about, you know, what is the, what does this mean? What is the impact on businesses, you know, if we, if we were to enact this? And, you know, how difficult would this be to implement? So I'm sharing my screen here. Popping over to Square. So this is a system, Square is a system that most, that a lot of small businesses use. So I downloaded it a little bit earlier today, set up my own store here. I've got some nice baguettes that could be sold at Yoon, I've got a nice big beautiful space rock that could be sold at, at some, at some other store. And what you'll see here is, it is very easy, so I'm adding the space rock, I'm adding my baguette, I'm adding my tacos and my San Pellegrino. Heck, I'm selling folks the pictures of Mayor Tisdale and Mayor Morton and Mayor Hagerty out there. Got it all at my store. It's time to check out, so we, we don't have a picture of you yet. I'd sell your picture too, and it'd be quite expensive. But, and we got Lunch with Ray Friedman, we're selling that too here. Now you need to check out, and you need to add your plastic bag. Well, bam, just click plastic bag, it's added. Well, you actually need a couple plastic bags, because these items are large. So you've got your 13 items, including your couple plastic bags, you click review sale, the sale is reviewed, you click charge, you can take cash, you can take Apple Pay, you can do whatever you want. So let's say we're just taking cash, and folks are giving me what they have, I've got the cash, they give me exact change, wonderful, they made their sale. All right, so now I just made the sale, I sold my items, and sold them the plastic bags, and the plastic bags took a couple milliseconds. Then I go over to reports, and I click sales, and then I go down on sales, and I look at, I look at the various categories. And lo and behold, here we are. We have paper bags, or plastic bags, or whatever kind of bag you're using, and it shows me exactly what I had in sales. All right? So now I've seen that I have $16.35 in bags, that's a whole lot of bags, too. And I know that five cents of each bag of the 15-cent tax belongs to me, because that's what this does, and so I keep, I take off a third, and then I write my check to the City of Evanston for their remaining two-thirds, and put that in the mail. How much time do I have left to speak?
None.
None. It took me less than five minutes to run the report, write my check out, and put it in the mail. So, so I know I'm at my time. But my point in this is what are folks really saying the burden is? I set this store up today, I ran through this in a couple seconds, there's nothing about this as hard. Now, am I kidding? I mean, show me something different. And when you look at the, and this is, I didn't have to pay anything for this, this was free, the software, even if you're not using the, if you're using the card payment systems, yeah, they're going to charge you for that. If you're someone just taking cash, you can do this for free, and look how easy it was to look up that report, and know exactly what I have to transmit to the city, and write my check, and send it off. It's a few minutes, it's once a month, and it ensures that we're able to do what we need to do to make our community cleaner, to, to make sure that we are being leaders on environmental, on our environmental impact. What the studies have shown, and I'm going to wrap up here, my apologies, I had to go through that demonstration, so how easy this is. so how easy this is to actually implement. The studies, there are no studies that show that this is detrimental to business. Every single study shows that the tax is effective, that this, that these measures are effective. A tax and a ban combined, I can imagine, are only the most effective. And so, let's get, if we want to think about small businesses, we can figure something out. But removing small businesses entirely or shooting down the tax, reducing the tax, and I'll start closing here. But the question about reducing the tax from 10 cent to 15-
Could you finish closing?
Yes, I will wrap up, sorry. The question about reducing the tax from 15 cent to 10 cent, the problem there is, at least in what was sent earlier, it leaves no money for education. So we're going to have a ban in a year or so, but we're not going to have the money to actually educate people about how we, you know, maybe do this, how we can, how folks can use reusable bags or shop in alternative methods that will not have a major impact on their lives. And then last point-
Thank you very much.
All right.
So we'll now go to Councilmember Harris, followed by Hadda Kadi, followed by Burns.
Thank you. I just, thank you for your visual. I think it was oversimplified. But I just think coming out of COVID, our small businesses are struggling. They've told us that time and time again. And to relieve that burden and to make sure that we have our small businesses, that's unique to Evanston, not only Evanston. But I just think it's a bad move right now. That's my opinion.
Councilmember Hadda Kadi, followed by Burns.
So I've talked to a couple of business owners, and I think the difficulty with this is most small business owners are probably exempt based on our definition of the bag types. But that's something we really have to work out and be clear about. Me personally, I'd like to just ban plastic bags in general. There's also some things we need to figure out about how we exempt small businesses. And maybe that's a, like a licensing agreement to, you know, you fill out a form saying you're using paper bags, and you can be exempt from the bag tax. I do think this subject needs some more work. I'm in support of the amendments that have been talked about and hoping to hear some sort of motion to table and work on this a little bit more. But we do have to, I think the intent is to, you know, get rid of the plastic bags from the big-box stores and not be a burden on small businesses.
Councilmember Burns.
Yeah, so does this, the ordinance before us, does it include the ban as well or just the tax? Because I thought we were always talking about a tax and a ban.
Good evening, members of the City Council. Mayor Biss, my name is Cara Pratt. I'm the Sustainability and Resilience Coordinator. The ordinance before you includes both the proposed tax and the proposed ban.
That was my understanding. And so, my question to Councilmember Revel a few moments ago was, does the, I don't think a motion has been made yet, but does that, are you also saying you're trying to exempt small businesses and restaurants from the ban or just the tax? That was what I was trying to get clarification on.
Well, my understanding of the ban, that's the ban in a couple of years that applies to what Councilmember Nusma I want to call pre-checkout bags, the bags that you use at the grocery store to bag your lettuce and your apples.
The ban is on checkout bags as well. I think we've been calling it something different, but checkout bags as well. Or maybe that's what we've been calling it.
The ban on plastic bags would include point-of-sale plastic shopping bags as well as produce bags as defined in the ordinance. I think there might be something lost in translation between the produce bag definition that we added after the Human Services Commission and the, what did you say, Councilmember Revel? The pre-checkout-
Pre-checkout.
The pre-checkout bag, just-
Which is produce bag, right?
Right. It's another way to talk about a produce bag.
I believe they're defined in identical ways in the ordinance, right?
Right, yeah. So, in California, they just, in October of last year, passed a ban on what they're calling pre-checkout bags. And they had originally planned, the original version was to go into effect in 2023. And there was, of course, big hue and cry from the grocery industry. So they made the effective date January of 2025 to give the grocery businesses an opportunity to get their act together, because basically, they're allowing compostable bags, produce bags, so that it would be giving the grocery industry a time to develop inexpensive compostable bags for-
So I understand what the proposed changes are saying in terms of, you know, extending it. I think the period is eight months before non-compostable pre-checkout bags are banned. What I'm saying is, in addition to that, I think we're also banning checkout bags. And so, I want to make sure that your goal is not to exempt small businesses and restaurants from that, is my question.
Well, I think I am wanting us to focus right now on the larger businesses.
Even for the checkout bags, is what I'm saying? And not just the pre-checkout bags?
Right. Yeah, so restaurants, for example, I want to have them be exempt from this, from the proposed fee. And I suppose, yeah, I-
Because they could be exempt from the tax, but included in the ban, is what I'm saying.
In 2025.
And I don't know if your proposed change spoke to it, but what was, currently, what is, what are we saying that we're going to?
The proposed ban on all plastic bags, that's shopping plastic bags and produce plastic bags, would be April 1st of 2024.
Okay.
And it's currently drafted for all stores, small, large, and in-between?
Correct.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah, I mean, I would think, first of all, I would recommend that we aim at 2025 and then allow, encourage restaurants to get up to speed with compostable bags for carryout. Because right now, I think, carryout, eliminating carryout bags for restaurants is going to be complicated.
I think, I think it's, I think that puts it on the consumer to bring, what we've been talking about this, I think during the entire discussion, to bring the truly reusable bags, which is what we've discussed, you know, in economic development and environmental, and the environmental board, I believe. So I want to be clear here is that I have not, I've heard from, just to be generous, very few, but I don't think I've heard from any small businesses that have expressed concerns about the ban. And I don't know if y'all want to nod or say we do, but, you know, I'm the Chair of Human Services Committee. I asked every single person that came up and spoke, what do you feel about the ban? I have not heard concern about the ban on small businesses or restaurants. I've heard concern about the tax. And that's not to say we shouldn't do that. What I'm saying is, is please do not try to make a motion to remove them from the ban, because that's not even where the concern, that's not the concerns that have been expressed.
Can I just interject for a second?
Yeah, please, yeah.
My understanding is that, and I'm not, you know, I don't have a crystal ball, but my understanding is the motion that's coming is not going to be a specific amendment at all. But give us some time to put that proposal in writing so that folks aren't put on the spot trying to assess an amendment on the fly.
Well, I think the problem is that is, I think we all agreed, and we did this while complying with OMA. But I think what I certainly expressed, and I think Councilmember Revel agreed in emails in advance of this meeting, is that we will vote on, unless we're just going to say, let's hold this or table it or whatever we can do. That's one thing. But I think, but the issue is, before we ask staff to do anything, we can discuss it further. But if we're going to ask them to do something, we need to vote on what we're asking them to do. If all we're saying is go back and talk about it some more, which I think we know what that's going to amount to. But if we are saying that, then that should be, the motion should be to do it in a working group or we need to send it somewhere where it can be discussed. But not specifically with the intention of talking about any specific thing or any specific direction unless we take a vote, unless a majority of people up here say, yes, we want to make this specific change, and we want that change discussed at this, you know, at this body. I just want to be clear. But I think there is enough support from the business community to move forward on the ban. Just to be generous, maybe a few people have expressed concerns about the ban. Most of it was the tax. All of it was really the tax. Even today, it was the tax. They're nodding now. So like, there are some things that we can move forward on, but I just wanted clearer direction on that.
No one is requesting to speak for the first time, so we go back to Councilmember Nusma with three minutes and 40 seconds left.
So I will go ahead and make the motion based on the email that went out earlier. And my motion is going to be to amend the draft ordinance that's in front of us tonight. And I'll read through the six bullets fairly quickly. To, number one, keep the scope of the current shopping-
Let me just interject here, Councilmember. I am, I am uneasy asking people to vote on something which is a bulleted list of policy concepts as opposed to the text of a resolution, ordinance. So if you have a text for people to vote on, that's something that we could do. But otherwise, I would really, and one of my New Year's resolutions was to kind of explain this position to council before it came up, and here we are. But I'm really uneasy putting us in situations where stuff which is not a precisely worded ordinance or resolution or what have you gets voted on, and the next day, staff is ping-ponging emails back and forth trying to figure out what exactly folks meant. I just, I know that for introductions, it's a little bit less problematic, but it really, I think, is a bad practice that I want us to move away from. So my request is either make some proposal like what Councilmember Burns was saying, to table, to a date certain, to hold, to refer it somewhere else, or give us something that's, the details in writing, don't just give us a list of bullets.
Point of information or order. May I ask that this be referred back to Human Services? I think that's a good place for it, the weeds to be fleshed out. There's a lot that you all are looking to amend, and I think we need to give staff time to look at it and-
If I could reclaim my time.
Please.
I agree with the mayor that we don't want to vote even to introduce an ordinance until we have ordinance language in front of us. I completely agree with that. What I would like to have tonight is a discussion of these suggested changes so we can give the direction to staff to make the changes to the language ordinance, the ordinance language, so we can have something to vote on. And so, my intent here was to have the discussion on these proposals so we can give that firm direction, then come back with something that we can vote on.
Mr. Cummings.
As part of the staff that would be responsible for drafting that amendment, I would ask that this be referred to the Human Services Committee so that my staff and Sustainability and all the folks that are going to be having their hands in the pot to draft this ordinance have an opportunity to incorporate. I did get the email. I was part of that chain. But we would still need to make sure the language works. And I think that the committee level is probably the best place for that.
I would say a compromise, if you're uncomfortable with that, is we could just do a series of straw polls and votes by hands. You could say, raise your hand if you agree with this. Raise your hand if you agree with that. Raise your hand if you agree with the other. And that, you know, if something gets two hands up, that'll be a pretty clear sign, probably not going to fly. If something gets seven signs, hands up, it's a sign it probably is. But I think, I think that's the sort of way, rather than kind of trying to make a motion on top of the underlying motion at this time, is the way to go.
Councilmember Revel, you comfortable with that? And also, who's chairing Human Services? And does that, will that give you informative input?
I'm chairing it next, next month. Yeah, sure.
So shall we just run through this bullet list with a quick straw poll?
With, I mean, I think all of this is best for committee where we have the time to actually flesh this stuff out.
So Councilmember Nusma has the floor. You can, do you can just refer it?
If I have the authority to ask for a straw poll on limiting the ordinance to businesses of 10,000 square feet or greater, and also excluding restaurants and excluding non-chain stores, that language is what's in the current ordinance now that's on our books. Who's in favor of that?
Point of order, point of order, point of information. Council Cummings, are straw polls mentioned in Robert's rules? And how does that work? And should we be making official motions? And is this maybe best for, as you requested, Human Services?
Mine was only a request. I think to keep things clean, it probably should be a motion and a vote. However, you know, if you're really just giving staff direction and we're not referring this item back to committee, I think a straw poll is appropriate if you're only giving direction, if the council's only going to give direction.
I think, yeah, I think this will go back to committee to do the work. But I would like that committee to have the benefit of the collected council.
Nick, let me explain my thinking here. It looks like we don't have the language for an actual amendment. The, there's a motion right now before us, which is a motion to pass this thing. While that motion is before us, I don't think another motion of the form, hey, it is the sense of the council that we kind of prefer this general direction, is in order. But there's still a desire to get the sense of council. You know, Councilmember Nusma has got a couple of minutes left with which he can do whatever he wants. I would argue it's within his rights to use those minutes to say words and ask people to raise hands, and they can participate in the exercise or not, as they prefer. Do you have a different reading of the rules of procedure?
No, and as Chair, it's your determination to determine if it's in order or not, so.
I'm not saying that I would advise it. I'm just saying, if you want to, if you're looking for input, you're allowed to ask questions and ask people to raise hands. I don't know if there's a motion you could make right now that would be in order.
So it's not a motion.
There's not a motion. I guess, I will not make a motion, but I will ask for the sense of the council. Number one, do you support excluding small businesses? By which I am proposing the definition that's currently on our books of 10,000 square feet or greater and excluding restaurants and non-chain stores.
And real quick, point of information, we will be allowed discussion. Obviously, this is a motion, so hopefully this is okay, but-
From the tax.
A friendly amendment to this non-motion. Again, they did not, we have not heard great support for excluding them from the ban. And I would like to take that out of this.
I amended that from the tax.
From the tax, okay. I just want to be clear.
And then, I don't know.
A simple question, like, let's get through this. It's going to go back to Human Services for more discussion.
This is why this needs actual discussion. There are 7-Elevens, there are, you know, maybe a small Trader Joe's. There are plenty of businesses-
Councilmember Nusma has the floor.
That are under, point of information, then. Council Cummings, a point of information can be at any time. Council Cummings, do you think, I mean, or Cara Pratt, would you, I think we should listen to staff here, And, and I, and I, I'd want to hear what your thoughts on, uh, reduce, on eliminating businesses that are 10,000.
That's not a point of information.
That is, I'm seeking information. This whole thing is out of order.
Mr. Mayor, if I had, my understanding is that I have the floor and I've asked for just the sense of the council. Can we limit, can we exclude small businesses based on the criteria I've, I've suggested, perhaps some different criteria?
From the tax.
From the tax. If you're comfortable with that, raise your hand, please. I can see one, two, three, four, five.
My hand, my hand is raised.
And six. Okay, good enough, good enough for now. Six and a half at least. I'm going to skip the whole pre-checkout thing because that, I'm not going to spend my time, my time on that. But by excluding small businesses, I don't think we need to deal with the gift bag thing at all. That just confuses things and let's, let's just do away with that. If anybody objects, say so now. I see no objections. I'm also proposing that we reduce the fee from 15 cents to 10 cents. With that 10 cents being split, five cents to the retailer, three cents to the solid waste fund, two cents to the Health Department for Enforcement. This is enough of, uh, of a financial incentive to encourage the behavior we want without being, you know, without being punitive. If people are comfortable moving to 15, to, to 10 cents from 15, show a hand.
Real quick, point of information, or I don't know what it is, point of something, but, um, there's no, there's nothing here for education and that was in the.
There's nothing in, in here for education, that's true. And I think this is where we have, uh, community groups that need to step up, that honestly need something to do. And I think this is a great task for community groups. So.
Point of, 15 to 10?
I mean, can we at least do 15 to 10 and take away the percentage thing, let Human Services discuss that?
Okay, this is all, none of this counts anyway, right?
Sort of does. You're saying you give it directly.
So the sense of the council is that 15 to 10 is, is maybe not a bad idea. We are also, uh, Councilmember Revelle and I are suggesting an effective date of, uh, June 1st, 2023 for the bag tax. That was, uh, an effective date was not specified in the ordinance in front of us.
Is that true, Cara? What's the effective date?
There was.
The effective date for the tax as proposed in the ordinance would be April 1st of this year. And for the plastic bag ban would be April 1st of 2024.
All right, if that was there, both Councilmember Revelle and I missed it. April 1st, June 1st, I, doesn't matter, April 1st will be fine. And then our last suggestion was to set the future date for the outright ban on, uh, on.
Plastic produce?
Plastic bags to be January 1st of 2025 rather than January 1st of 2024. I'm sorry, um, that was a typo there, rather than June 1st of 2024. The thinking there was to align us with, uh, California laws that will be coming onto the books and no reason for us to get a, ahead of a multi-billion dollar market that's going to be causing, you know, going to be facilitating the changes we need to see here.
So it seems like you changed something on the fly. This says non-compostable pre-checkout. So I just want to make sure you mean, which is fine if you mean something different, but.
Again, another reason to refer this to committee to have a more robust discussion.
If it's just the whole program shifts to 2025, I'm, you know, that's fine too, but.
The 2025 is focusing on these pre-checkout produce bags.
Non-compostable bags, so that's, that's the ask.
Is that the poll?
I would ask that you begin to wrap this up.
So that, that's the end of the poll. I've, I've run through our bullet points. We've gotten some feedback here. I think, uh, referring this back to Human Services for a more in-depth and robust discussion with the direction that, or lack thereof, that's come from this discussion tonight, I think it's the next best.
Is that a motion?
So I will make that motion to refer this back to Human Services.
Councilmember Newsma moves to refer ordinance 1-0-23 back to the Human Services Committee. Councilmember Revelle seconds. Is there any discussion on the motion to refer it back to committee? Seeing none, with the clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
No.
Councilmember Revelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hidakatis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly? Councilmember Harris? Councilmember Harris? Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and one voting against, the motion carries and ordinance 1-0-23 is referred back to the Human Services Committee. Finally, this brings us to item H2. Councilmember Reed, did you care to make a motion on this item as well?
Sure. Uh, I'll move item, uh, HS2, which is ordinance 2023, amending the city code, creating Title 12, Consumer Protections, Chapter 1, Cashless Establishments Prohibited.
Councilmember Reed moves passage of ordinance 2-0-23. Councilmember Kelly seconds. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Sufferton.
Yeah, I just want to ask, during the time that this was at, uh, Human Services, did economic development get involved at all? Did we have any sense of how many businesses in Evanston are cashless, how many are cash only? Any idea what the mix is there? Does anybody know? Was it discussed? Was it part of the analysis here?
There, uh, no, but there are cashless establishments that exist. It's certainly a fact that they exist.
But in Evanston?
In Evanston, yes.
I went to a Northwestern basketball game, and if I'm incorrect, hopefully they correct me, but they did not take cash. And Councilmember Harris is shaking her head too. I found that surprising, so. And I double-checked with them just to make sure, I'm like, y'all don't take cash? Cause I knew this was coming up and they don't, so.
And, and I don't want to call out specific businesses, but I've been to businesses in Evanston that do not accept cash. And I didn't have anything but cash on me at the time, so I'm quite aware that this exists here in Evanston.
Okay, but was there, was Paul's, was there any economic development inquiry here or is this all just equity, Human Services play?
This was equity, Human Services play.
You know, I appreciate that. I just worry that there may be unintended consequences and I don't know. Paul's here, I don't, or, I, I was at the Bears game yesterday and that Soldier Field is, is cashless. I mean, I, you know, I don't think that arenas are the issue. I think what you're trying to get at is basic foods, service type places. But Paul, do you have any idea how many cashless businesses there are? I mean, you know, we, we had talked about one place, but apparently they take cash now.
Once again, Paul Zalmasak, Economic Development Manager with the city. I don't have an answer for you, but that's something we could quickly find out.
Okay, I mean, I, if there's enough votes to pass this, then there's no point in holding it. But I just wonder how many there are, and I can think of a lot of, uh, reasons why a small business being cashless would be not a bad idea for a small business. I mean, I, you know, um, I, I just don't know. I, I want us to be really mindful of making decisions that affect businesses that exist, businesses that may consider moving here, businesses that have multiple locations and are making a choice whether or not they want to invest in Evanston or not. I don't think we're in a position as a city to be, um, unwelcoming and hostile towards investment. And I, but I don't, I don't know that this necessarily is or isn't. So I, you know, whatever, everyone vote however you want, but I think I'm going to vote no because I just don't know the answer. And I don't want to do anything that would discourage investment in Evanston.
Councilmember Reed.
Yeah, I, again, always appreciate folks raising their concerns. Uh, you know, I wonder if, if the numbers, 15 businesses? Is it 100 businesses? If it's 1,000 businesses, what does that materially change about, you know, what this, this ordinance is about? And, and again, this is, you know, we, we often put, you know, I, I keep hearing, what about the businesses? The businesses, the big business, small business, whatever, what about people? And there are people who are unable to access basic resources because of cashless establishments. And it creates a, a tiered system, uh, that, that is inequitable and particularly for seniors and for disadvantaged folks, marginalized folks. And so, you know, I, I want to create a city that is welcoming to people, all kinds of people and, uh, uh, including people who own businesses. And I, I don't think this is a huge burden. This is ACLU, as was mentioned earlier, has done, uh, uh, some research on this. Many cities have introduced cashless bans, um, and it, again, there's no research or anything that I can find that shows that these are harmful to, uh, to, to the, the business community. But it is certainly beneficial to, again, folks who are marginalized. And then lastly, um, you know, this ordinance includes, um, measures, you know, for example, there are new stores like Amazon Go that are popping up. And not in Evanston, but certainly in Chicago. And Amazon Go is a completely, essentially virtual store. You walk in and you just take stuff off the, the shelf and you just walk out and it automatically charges you. What, and, and these Amazon Go stores exist in New York. They, uh, there's two in Chicago, I believe. But, and New York has a cashless ban. And so what our ordinance, and I got this from New York, what our ordinance includes is that if you are one of those cashless businesses, you can still be cashless, but you have to install a machine, and these machines exist and they're out there where people can load in cash without being charged an extra fee. And then they get a card and they can use that card at your business and it wouldn't expire at any point. And they can use it for as long as they want at, at your business. And so that exists and that, you know, helps assuage some of the concerns of businesses who want to remain cashless and don't want to have to deal with cash, where you just get this machine and it allows you to continue operating in the manner that you have operated. But still makes you accessible to folks who are unbanked or don't have access to, uh, other forms of payment. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, with the clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
No.
Councilmember Revelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hidakatis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and one voting against, the motion passes and ordinance 2-0-23 passes for introduction. We'll be back here, um, at our subsequent council meeting on January 23rd. This brings us to call of the wards. Councilmember Burns?
No report.
Councilmember Sufferton?
No.
Councilmember Revelle?
Tomorrow evening from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Chandler Community Center, we're going to be having our first community meeting to, uh, discuss what residents would like to see in the reimagined Independence Park.
Councilmember Reed.
Eighth ward meeting as always, last Thursday of the month, especially if it's January, at 6:00 p.m. Folks can join virtually.
Councilmember Hidakatis?
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Kelly? Councilmember Harris?
Second ward council meeting will be January 24th, 24th virtually.
Councilmember Nguyen?
No report.
Councilmember Newsma?
Fourth ward meeting will not be taking place tomorrow. It will be rescheduled to Thursday of this week, January 12th, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. In Room D at Robert Crown, that's the one upstairs. And office hours remain a question mark for this Saturday due to our special city council meeting plan for goal setting. So they will not happen Saturday morning. Stand by. I'll let you know when office hours are going to happen.
Uh, that concludes call of the wards. Councilmember Newsma is recognized again to make a motion.
Pursuant to 5 Illinois compiled statutes, 120 slash 2A, I move that the city council convene into executive session to discuss agenda items regarding collective negotiating, uh, the purchase or use of real property and litigation. These agenda items are permitted subjects to be considered in executive session and are enumerated exceptions under the Open Meetings Act as set forth in 5 ILCS 120 slash 2A, Sections C2, C5, and C11.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Newsma moves that the city council resolve itself into an executive session to discuss the items just mentioned. Councilmember Harris seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, with the clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton? Councilmember Revelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hidakatis? Councilmember Kelly? Councilmember Harris? Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries. And at 9:46 p.m., the city council resolves itself into executive session to begin in the council member library immediately.